All right, we're live. I can also. All right, we're gonna start the June 20th Select Board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey. Everybody have a opportunity to look at the manifests from June 13th and payroll June 14th?
Yeah.
Say nothing.
Take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the county's payable manifest of June 13th, 2022, and the payroll manifest of June 14th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we need to go back and revisit the minutes of May 23rd.
The pages. Let's write them. Okay. Yeah.
There was a information that wasn't captured in the minutes that we just make, need to make sure was captured. So we're gonna go back and amend those minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the minutes. Is this in a complete addition of missing information?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not a change of an existing sentence?
Correct, yeah.
It is, it is a replacement of.
It's a replacement, correct.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to amend the minutes of May 23rd to include the new sentence on page one after, after the vote for the Conservation Fund. Next paragraph, beginning, "Mr. Dumas made a motion for the BOS to approve the use of nineteen thousand and eight dollars in fire impact fees and up to one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to retire debt on the fire station. Mr. Eaton seconded unanimously, unanimously approved by a vote of four zero."
I need a second.
A second.
All in favor? Yeah. Uh, Ray, are we all caught up on other minutes or do we owe you anything on other minutes?
No. Um, six, six, well, six, six, I just said to you all this past weekend.
Okay, so we'll do that next time. Okay. Awesome. Boards and committees? Anything? Anyone?
Planning for the continued discussions on the small tree subdivision of the four lots. And then they talked about subdivision, two lots on the preschool. So it's all, all in discussion.
Okay.
I don't have anything on 300. Steve might.
Yeah, the only thing I talked to Steve today about today on the 300th is the committee has invited the Select Board to march in the parade that's gonna be held on August 13th. And the parade is assembling at 11:00 a.m. at Francesca. And so assembly at 11:00, march at 12:00, and it goes from Francesca to the town hall here. So for any board members that are available to march, that would be awesome.
What day is this?
It's August 13th.
It's Saturday.
Saturday, August 13th.
July 4th, we're reinstituting the reading of the Declaration of Independence. There used to be a real town fixture at Deering's. At nine o'clock at the DAR building in Nottingham Square, they'll be doing the reading of the Declaration of Independence. And at eight o'clock, there'll be egg sandwiches and beverages available, all free. But this is get the 300th committee has resurrected that with that.
Great. Cool, thank you. Budget still out of season? CIP still out of season?
Yep.
Okay. Marston, things are still moving along. Chris and, or even Steve, you were out there taking pictures today. How's it looking out there?
It's, it's grass. It's looking more and more like it should be.
Good.
Again, with the defenses is very impressive.
Awesome. Excellent. Okay, Chris?
Just a few things. Parks and Rec ran their first ever community yard sale a week ago Saturday to rave reviews. It was a, let's try this, a little community building thing, not a recreation event per se, but did it here same time as a big day of baseball. So there was a lot of, a lot of traffic and got good reviews. So I think they may try that again next year. When you last met, we had the E-911 public hearing. The feedback thus far has been pretty limited. We've got one, I think, one extended comment that was forwarded to you. And then we have a couple of suggested names that we've received. We're just gonna, we're collecting those. We'll give them to you all on a batch at the end of the week here. But we're asking for all of that feedback by the end of next week, as we said at the hearing. Because you'll be tackling that at your meeting on July 11th.
While we're on that topic, does anybody have any comments or questions or thoughts from the public hearing?
No.
Not really. I mean, it's, it, it was helpful for me to see, well, to hear more, not just from the state person, but from the people that are gonna be affected by it. Because I really didn't know a lot about the process to begin with.
Yeah.
So it was helpful.
So the, the task on the 11th is to determine, to make a decision about moving forward with that. Chris is gonna have a list of recommended names or suggested names, right, that night?
Yeah, we, we're hoping to get suggestions from residents. If we don't, we'll, we'll plug something in, or, you know, a few things in for you to consider. But really hoping to hear from residents ahead of time. We'll run those proposed names by the state and make sure that they're within the standard and give you whatever the results of that are. So you'll have a go or no-go decision and a naming decision for many road segments on the 11th.
Okay, I'll just reiterate that I'm gonna be traveling out of the country on that date. And it's very important for the board to have a quorum that night, given that people are expecting the, the board to make a decision that night.
Good on that. Uh, the only other thing, last meeting, we also discussed a new IT support vendor. They've been in and are on the job. They've got their monitoring stuff in place. They didn't run away screaming last week, so I'm gonna call it a good day. We're off to a good start there. No, no panic buttons hit. So, uh, I think that's it. We, we do have a quick non-public at the end. I got some stuff for that. And other than that, you've got a full night, so.
Okay.
What letter?
Pardon?
What letter?
Two A?
Uh, A and L. Okay, just wanna be ready.
Um, we've got about five minutes before our appointment with the building committee. Is there anything you think we can cover in five minutes, Chris?
Uh, assessing.
Okay. Everybody have an opportunity to look at all of the assessing?
What's this item for other? I don't, I don't know. I mean, we can look it up. Re-enrolling in current use.
That's what that one is?
Yep, I'm looking for an address here. Calling up the form that Kelly sent you. Uh, property location Shore Drive. Looks like.
No, is it? I don't think so. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're correct.
We're good? Shore Drive?
Yeah.
It looks like a fractional piece of, yeah, a tiny fraction being re-enrolled in current use.
Yeah, so Kelly shared the other assessing item is an A-10 for putting a small parcel of land frontage back in current use. This parcel had a dock. The current use amount was removed by Avatar. Avatar has since verified and witnessed the dock removal and the top polygraphy back to its original state. Avatar adjusted the current use credit. So this is the paperwork side of it.
Okay.
We're all good on that.
All right, and none of these abatements were recommended for rejection?
Not that I saw. Did everybody else get a chance to look at all of that?
Hold it, yeah, very good.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion on the Select Board to approve the abatements for MAP 67 Lot 19 and MAP 13 Lot 12.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion to, for the Select Board to approve the cut report for MAP 24 Lot 48.
Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion on the Select Board to approve the elderly exemption for MAP 16 Lot 19.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, make a motion on the Select Board to approve the disabled exemption for MAP 42 Lot 7.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make a motion to the Select Board to approve the current use change for MAP 68 Lot 34 dash four.
Second.
All in favor? Chris, what are we supposed to do with the letter from Sam?
Uh, if you want, you can dive into the, subject is Conservation Commission requesting that you look at a permit application on Raymond Road at the gravel pit out there. They are, I'm going on secondhand information with this, but my understanding is they are correcting some prior unpermitted work around the river that travels through there. There's a bridge or culvert over, over a river there. We received notice of the permit, after the fact permit application. Conservation Commission asked you to take that in mind when you consider any future events at that, at that site. That's the site of the water cross.
Right.
Same, same general area, not actually the same parcel, but same, same neighborhood. This is a, I think, a relatively straightforward permit and work process. I think it looks like it's catching up for stuff that should have been done in the past, perhaps with a prior owner. And it's a engineered monster of a document that we have a copy for you. If you wanna, if you wanna scan of it, we can do that, or you can come in and flip through it. I, I don't wanna try and translate what the work is because I don't know the engineering of it. But that's the best Reader's Digest version of it I can give you.
So is there any action on our part that we need?
There's nothing you have to do. If you, if you want to, I would suggest you start by looking over that report and permitting stuff. And you can decide if you wanna weigh that for future events or any other, anything else around that property. There's nothing, there's no straight line relationship between events that are upcoming and, and this permitting process. It's, it happens to be the same geography, but they're, they're not. There's no direct relationship between those two things.
All right, thank you. All right, let's move into the building committee.
So you said, let's have a talk, and we invited everybody that was interested in participating. Come on up, I think. Why don't we, let's see.
Yeah, come up to the table, grab a couple of other chairs.
Yeah, I'll, I'll scoot over here and we can.
I don't know, Chris, it looks like a Motley Crue.
Yeah, speak for yourself.
And you were gonna talk about what you were gonna ask these folks to do as a group. Once we get through that, and I think your next meeting, I'll ask you to formally appoint them as a, as something, as a, whatever you wanna label it. But make them an official, officially appointed body so that they would, their work would fall under the right to know parameters, agenda postings, minutes, those kinds of things. And, and make it official once they have a charge from you or an understanding from you, and they also have ideas of what they'd like to provide, so.
Yes, this is kind of an open, unstructured conversation. I mean, I, I know that there's been a lot of talk about, you know, the number of buildings that we have in town and whether they're best utilized, whether they're worthy of investment or, you know, saved for historic value, you know, so I, I think that this is really kind of open. I know Gary, you have some thoughts and some ideas. I think we've, it looks like we have a good representation of experience. Does anyone on the board want to share or talk about anything first with regards to this topic?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so, so Gary, do you wanna share some of the thoughts you've had with us?
I'd love to, yeah, I'd, so, yeah, I somewhat initiated this, this meeting, I guess, if you will. And I'll go back and say I was a part of a building committee a number of years ago where we did look at buildings in town. We did a few things. We had some involvement in the sand storage at the town pit and some, and how that was done. A number of things. We also did look at the building area in the back, which is still existing as we know, so.
So to speak.
What I, I guess my, my thought is, the reason I brought this forward and I thought it might be advantageous for the town is that I've seen things, you know, talked about or looked at, but really wasn't a plan in place. So I, I think it's important to maybe take a look at everything as one picture and try to come up with a, a plan. And, yeah, it'd be great to put a timeline on that, but at least some kind of prioritize structure so that we could maybe bring it to this board and, and let you go at it. But, um, yeah, so there's a few, a number of things that I think we're all aware of. We can, but, but it's a matter of what do you start with? And, and what makes the most sense to start with first? And how does one affect another? So these are the things that I've been thinking about pretty much.
What, what buildings would you have on the list, Gary?
On the list?
Yeah.
Well, okay. This building in general.
Yeah.
So it was space issues, whatever. Upgrading, that kind of thing. The police department's included in there. The, obviously, the, the back part of this building, which has been looked at and examined, but, you know, there still needs to be some, some resolve there. But I think there couldn't, all the buildings in town could come into play. It could be looked at maintenance-wise, upkeep-wise, and just put as, put on the list with some kind of priority as to which ones need to be addressed first, last.
So we're talking about everything like the transfer station to the old fire station? Would we include the library in this or be a separate entity?
I don't know about, I don't know about library.
Well, it, it, you know, my thought is it could be on the list, but maybe, maybe there's nothing to look at, or maybe there is.
My interest is particularly in maintenance. I'm a relative newcomer. I've only lived here six years. But I, and I'm not interested in the Taj Mahal built here in any way. But I would like to see us be, you know, not penny wise and pound foolish. I'd like to see a, a plan for maintenance for the buildings. And I first became aware or more interested because I just volunteered to be a friend of the library. And it came to my attention, just doing some simple landscaping, that there were no gutters. There were downspouts, and I guess the roof had been replaced some years ago, but somehow the gutters hadn't. And the foundation was being eroded and the doors on the bottom floor were rotting from the rain. And I thought, you know, for the lack of fifteen hundred dollars' worth of gutters, we're going to have thousands of dollars' worth of repairs. And as I looked around, I noticed all some siding was falling off. Pretty simple repairs, not costly. And then I started looking around a little bit more and, and just interested in how circuitous this seems to, to be. How do we get repairs done? What are the priorities? We're always budget conscious. But it, it does seem worthwhile to try to have a, some sort of a maintenance plan. Perhaps there's one that I'm not aware of, but it does seem like a lot of things just slip through the cracks. Nobody's fault particularly, but just isn't planned.
Yeah.
I think just get spending more money in the long run on things that could be more than this. And I totally believe in volunteerism. However, there's some basic, you know, change the faucet, a doorknob falls off, a piece of siding falls off, the gutters aren't there, that I would like to see the town or a committee like this take some responsibility for.
So let me ask, is there a, can the town and the board put together a, a quick list of properties that us as the building committee could look at, review, and maybe add to or deduct from? We don't know everything, but the town halls, I hope you guys do.
We wanted a public access, right, a regular activity.
No, 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 no. No, no, no. No, and I, I, I think that's fair, and I think, I think we should do that. I think we have to also recognize what's off limits. Like I would say the school is not part of this. The school is off limits.
Agreed.
Because that's not our area of responsibility.
I was gonna suggest to the board if, if we had, if you, you as a board felt comfortable with it, and I think it would just save you doing this. Not that you never meet with department heads, but in regard to this particular item, if you will, if, if we as a board could have a quick meeting with some of the department heads, they would probably give us the best input as to their facility and, you know, what that looks like and what they're seeing or needs, so.
I don't have a problem. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Gary, do you envision that like the output of this committee might be almost like a CIP plan? Where there might be some items that are like, here's, like, to your point, here's some short-term maintenance that we think needs to be addressed, but also here's some bigger work that we think needs to be done, and here's how we would prioritize it out over time?
It almost seems like it should be almost a three-phase thing, whether it's the most immediate items, long-term capital improvements, and then that middle ground where you just need to have an expansion of a certain spot or something like that. So you, you can assess each property, get that base level required maintenance, then go from the long-term goal of the property, if there's some kind of long-term expansion plan for that particular property, and then scale it down to that middle ground to find those other smaller steps. And I think that that would be also tied in with which properties receive the best, the most priority one at a time.
Or if a piece of property just needs to be razed and.
Yeah, you could come to that, you know.
Because it's too far gone.
Well, along with that, I was thinking kind of deeply into this. So one, if one existing facility was abandoned because of, there was a new one for it, so now that opens up that space for another use. And so it could be that there's consideration in that area.
Would you see it within the scope of what you guys do, like, to your point about maybe something needs to just be dismantled altogether? Would it be, would you see it within the scope of your responsibility to say, we think this needs to be done and we think it's gonna cost the town X? And here's how we would recommend the town go about it?
Yeah, it seems like that, that would be the function primarily is for us to do the homework.
Okay.
And then bring the, the recommendations and the presentation to you and, and you, or if it requires a warrant article for that point, you know, the next, whatever the next step may be. That would be our function. We do the homework. We get, we corral the, all the projects, and then we say, here they are.
Yeah, okay.
I think to, to your point though is the, uh, the order of things or the, the cost of things. Let's just say, all right, we determined that the back building is the number one priority. I'm just putting it out there. So, yeah, it wouldn't be till we could determine where the priorities are, I figure, to, to work on one.
Yeah. I mean, because where I'm going with that is like, we all know that back there is a problem. But, and, and for the committee to come to us and say, that's a problem, doesn't help us, right? It doesn't move us forward in any way, so.
Yeah, you need us to tell you to either save it, fix this, fix that, or tear apart.
And it would cost us X to tear apart, and it would be.
Ballpark figure would be.
Yes, exactly.
Problems with solutions, not problems without solutions.
We've got enough problems without solutions. How do you have a vision for how you might manage this committee? Or how this committee would function as a committee?
I'm looking at this as, as any other committee. Obviously, we're on this board, but, you know, we'd have to be organized. So we're gonna have to have somebody chair it, somebody maybe, maybe share the secretarial part of it. I don't know, or however that works.
Meet on a regular basis and.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, thoughts, anything to share from the board?
Scope and time? Like, when do you think you'll get majority of this? I mean, is this gonna be a two-year project or is this gonna be?
That was a question that was, I knew was coming and was gonna scare me the most. It's hard to determine that, I think.
Two weeks from Friday, okay?
I think, I think we need a little time to do some assessing first.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Time frame.
Once we get into it, maybe.
Once we get into it, I think we can come up with a reasonable time.
I think it depends on how many buildings we say
True, that's fair.
go after.
And the idea would be to do it in a, you know, expeditious, reasonable time, you know, not drag it on.
Well, I'm just, and I think that just because the fact is if you wanna put a warrant article up, we need to set one up. We need to know, you know, by a certain date before that happens. And that's why I'm kinda just curious if that's.
What is that date?
You're looking ahead, aren't you?
Legally, it's January. Politically, it's more like November. Because they've gotta, they've gotta decide, do they wanna even put it on the, you know?
Well, certainly that's.
And where it fits, if, if there are other budget implications, operating budgets, you know, under development at that time of year, so.
Certainly, that's almost six months away, five months away. So by that, yeah, by that point, there should be some assessments in place, some recommendations in place.
At least know what the priority is, and we put the priority forward.
Right, right, right.
Okay. So my suggestion would be that, Chris, we work on a, a list of the buildings that we work on, maybe a draft charter for this committee. that we get it out to all of them before the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, formalize the committee. Does that make sense, that approach? You guys all agree with that?
The royal we?
That is the royal we.
That's what you did in medical school.
Does the name matter?
The, the name of the, yeah, actually, yeah, I was gonna suggest that, because I think it's, it's all facilities, so. Facility Committee, and the old name was Building Committee, yeah.
Do we want to include, like, utility structures, like the, like the salt shed that the, for the highway department? Or the, um, the little, the little white house down at the beach?
I would expect so, it's a property.
It is, yeah.
Phone on it, yeah. I would expect so, yeah.
Well, the bigger scope you give, the better the run and know for the future, so.
Yeah.
When you're digging into it, you might as well try to-
That was why I was suggesting facility versus building, per se.
So if I could be real picky on that, I think, I wonder initially if we can call it the Facilities Assessment Committee? Because facilities suggests that it could be this new committee that's gonna have a long life, which we may get to some point and decide that we want that, but at least for this initial pass, if we could call it Facilities Assessment.
Sounds, sounds reasonable.
Okay. All right, everybody good with, uh, that process? Is anybody missing, Chris, that had signed up?
Barbara Draper had offered, and, um-
Isn't here or?
Isn't here.
Okay, great.
I'll loop back with her, I'm sure she's still-
Well, thank you all for coming forward and being willing to do this. I think this is really important, you know, that we do this, that we stop and take the time, and that you guys are willing to step up and, uh, and help with that, so thank you.
Well, I'd like to speak to that, because I could volunteer.
I think it's called Voluntold. You were voluntold.
No need to put that in minutes.
You're familiar with the, you're familiar with the royal we.
As far, moving forward, is, I guess, well, we have to formally be appointed, correct? Um, but also, can, can we assume that whatever town support we need?
Yeah, yeah, well, run that for me. We'll, we'll take care of the, the legal side and the orchestrating stuff and the scheduling of the department heads, that kind of thing, I can, I can help you with that stuff.
And then I think what we can do is schedule certain check-ins, right? So maybe it's once a month or something like that, whatever makes sense with you guys, we can schedule a check-in.
Or if you feel like you have enough information that's worthwhile to come-
Yeah.
-to present, just-
Yeah.
Sure we can fit him in.
Yeah, exactly.
A page on the website.
Yep.
It's for, let people know how things are going.
Yep.
Let them know what's going on.
Cool. All right, guys, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take one second before we go into recycling.
That was just brainstorming about things to do to increase productivity, cut costs, to-
New revenue streams.
Okay. Next topic, recycling center operations. So, this came, this started by, um, kind of discussion amongst the board about, is there something that we could be doing to enable, you know, better, more efficient, more cost-saving, whatever, operations at the recycling center? And so this was set up as just kind of a brainstorming session about, you know, kind of what's current, what's going on. I think every member of the board here was asked to do some homework and study or look up ideas on how modern recycling centers are being ran. This is not a criticism in any way of current operations, but it's just a open discussion about how we could better support the program. Um, so I guess what I'd like to do is, Sean, can you just start with kind of just a high-level overview of how our recycling center operates?
Recycling center operates on winter and summer hours, summer hours being eleven, seven, winter hours being nine, five, both three days. Currently staffed by three members, which oversee the ongoings and the correct disposal of all materials brought into the recycling center. We bale cardboard, number two plastic, and number one plastic, which we use the NRRRA for, for marketing. We use the, the NRRRA for most, all of our marketing, except for our C and D and bulky waste.
Destruction and demolition debris, C and D.
Those, for those aspects. Um, take, most everything except brush and leaves at the recycling center, tires, glass, uh, aluminum cans, tin cans, mixed wood, uh, paper, cardboard, refrigerants, electronics, fluorescent bulbs, batteries, waste oil, and I think that sums it up. And, um, the, all those things have a different process. The waste oil is used to help heat the building in the winter time. Um, cardboard and plastic is a commodity. Most everything that goes through NRRRA is a commodity that, um, we get some sort of a revenue back on. Uh, bale cardboard, what will happen is, we will get to a certain point where we have to get to forty-five veils, which roughly weighs between a thousand and twelve hundred pounds per bale. And then they market it for us. It usually takes two weeks, tractor trailer comes in, and then it's loaded and it's shipped. Uh, plastic is done the same way. Number two, we collect more of really fast. Number one, we hold on to it for quite a while. Um, obviously, it's more money in number one than it is number two. Uh, each week on Monday, containers are called in to be hauled. Destruction and demolition, in both bulky ways, are called directly into Casella. And then if the metal needs to be hauled, the tin cans need to be hauled, the aluminum cans need to be hauled, the paper or the, or the wood, which, that will go through NRRRA, they give a release number. And then we give that release number to Casella. So Casella does all the hauling and the transfer station, except for the, the WMD, the Waste Management, the trash, they take care of that themselves. Electronics are run through a private, another company out of Massachusetts that comes and takes that container. And then we have two different companies that go back and forth, where the tire is dependent on who come, who is the cheapest, but that is handled by NRRRA as well. So, um, and then the glass is disposed of at the-
Explain where the C and D and the, all that stuff goes.
C and D-
The, the big volume stuff, where it goes.
That goes to ERCO. ERCO is a, is a place and epic, and that's where it's disposed at. Now, we pay ERCO dependent, ERCO's come on bulky waste and construction and demolition, we're paying a hundred and nineteen dollars a ton. Uh, average cans probably weighs three to four, three tons a, a weekend, each can. So, just, just some math I did, just on four, four point two tons is five hundred dollars you have to pay to get rid of that. And then you have to pay three hundred and fifty dollars to haul it. So it costs eight hundred and fifty bucks. You gotta do that for all the cans that don't produce a, a revenue source.
It does not?
No.
For aluminum cans?
Aluminum cans does.
Oh, okay, but-
When he says cans, he's talking about the roll-off dumpster.
Well, yes, I'm talking about the containers, excuse me.
That's what he was like, can? The, the wheel dumpsters, gotcha.
Yeah. So, a, a, all our cost is in dis- disposal and trucking. Um, to, year to date, just in Casella's trucking cost as of June first, we have paid thirty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars in, in trucking cost. I, I have not got Waste Management's numbers down yet, but I would imagine it's probably ten to twelve thousand, or maybe more. Because they empty that container once a week.
Board members?
So, thirty-two thousand five hundred a year to Casella?
Just to date.
That's, that's just till six months, that's June first.
Oh, oh, oh. So sixty-five thousand a year to haul?
That's what it's looking like, yes. That's just in hauling. That's not in disposal.
So I mean, just, at first glance, I mean, it, the, the math would seem to be in our favor to owning our own truck and hauling it ourselves, it would seem to be less expensive.
It, it would take a number of years, but yeah, it, it, I don't know, I have to do the math to figure out how that cost would be, what the cost of the truck would be, and then trying to find someone to operate the vehicle, because CDL drivers just don't seem to be around right now. And then anybody new that we want to train courses are very expensive.
What is that, a two-hundred thousand dollar truck?
I would-
Ballpark?
Ballpark, yeah.
Yeah, plus you have to, you have to, you have to buy your dumpsters upfront. You'd end up, you're not owning your dumpsters if you got into your own trucking operation, so it's-
We'd have to own all our own containers that the debris goes into.
That's the payback number that you're up against, and-
Right, right.
So we don't, we don't own those containers now?
No.
The only containers we own are the, uh, compactor containers. With everything along the retaining wall, at least, or rented.
The, um, private company for the electronics, who, who did you say they were?
I, I don't have that, I, I don't have that off the top of my head. I can get that to you. I, I wanted to say it's Roy's, but I, I, I don't want to. I can get that to you.
And are we, are we making money off of them, or spending money on them?
Spending money.
Spending money, right. One of the, one of the things I was looking into was on the topic of electronics recycling. And basically what these companies do is they're, you know, they're stripping this stuff down to get to the circuit boards, and then they process the circuit boards to get the precious metals out. So they're recovering the gold, the silver, the platinum, the high-grade aluminum that's all layered in these circuit boards, and they make, you know, good money doing it, but it's, it's a messy business, because you gotta soak these fiberglass circuit boards in different kinds of acids or enzymes or whatever to make them just melt away from the metal. One of the things I, I read about, um, especially in some of the bigger cities, is that they're, what they're doing, um, to save money in this area is, and granted, you know, these cities have more tax dollars to play with than we do, but they're pre-disassembling some of these items to take them down, you know, extract the circuit boards, and then when they call the company, it's just a load of circuit boards, right? So, you know, the, the number of trips becomes fewer, the marketable material is increasing, right? Marketable to the recycler, that is. And then the other stuff, um, you know, once you take away the circuit boards, all you've got is a mess of metals and plastics, so, um, most of your computers, the, the plastics are like, uh, you know, a dry-salt type plastic. I'm, I'm not sure what you can do with those, but all the metal, especially, you know, the bigger desktop computers, right? Those are all just stamped and riveted sheet metal, right? So that, I mean, those could go right in the metal dumpster, um, you know.
Well, that means like disassembling this to get the circuit board out of it?
Well, you know, it would, you'd have to, you know, there's a, there, there's a point of diminishing returns there. Disassembling a laptop is a lot more difficult than disassembling, say, a television or a desktop computer, right? And then like, even the, you know, the power supplies, um, that, that are in a computer, they have, um, those, uh, big copper coils in them, right? So there's some value in that, but it takes time to get it out, right? Um, but, you know, for things like, you know, a power supply could go in the same place as a car's alternator or a fan motor, right? Anything that's got copper windings, um, is gonna be valuable to companies that, that recycle that kind of thing. And this is where I start to get lost in terms of the practicalities, that any, anything, anything we can do to sort of pre-process materials, maybe stuff we've never pre-processed before, but anything we do to make it more valuable is gonna cost us time and money.
We're, we're doing a process of that now that we have never before, and we're doing that with wire. So we're stripping wire, taking parts of coating off, and just having the copper itself. So try and make a few more bucks doing that. That's relatively an easy thing to do. There's a small machine that sits on the bench and it runs through and strips off the plastic. They have four barrels of it now that are ready to go, so that'll be a little bit of a higher return when it goes to, uh, harness.
And then the, the plastic waste, it just goes?
Into the dumpster, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There were, so I was looking at, you know, other types of things that we can pre-process. For example, you know, car tires, not that we see a lot of those, but you know, those can be ground up into rubber mulch, and they use that on playgrounds, right? But of course, we would need the appropriate shredding machine for that. Um, you know, asphalt can be ground up and reused for, you know, you know, remixed into new asphalt or just spread as loose gravel, right? I don't know if that's-
I looked into glass, crushing glass.
Yeah.
NRRRA offers a program through it. Um, you must, uh, have eight hundred to a thousand tons of glass onsite in an area set up, and it's fifty dollars a ton to crush.
For them to crush it?
Yes, for them to bring their equipment in, set up, and crush a thousand tons of glass, which will cost fifty thousand dollars. So I, there's other options on the glass, as well as I looked into, um, through NRRRA, we could haul it to Waste Management at forty dollars a ton to dispose of, and eat, a ten-wheeler full of glass weighs approximately ten tons. So, uh, we roughly haul out of there depending, it's two to, two loads, two to three loads a month.
For how much tonnage?
The ten tons. So, oh, forty dollars a ton, it would be four hundred dollars a truck.
I mean, what's our total monthly tonnage of glass?
It will do, it depends. So the winter time, obviously, it slows down a little bit. It will do, it depends. So, the winter time, obviously, it slows down a little bit. Right now, volume's high a little bit.
Cause it's summer and everybody's drinking.
Glases up.
Yeah, yeah.
Tito's is popular.
Yeah.
What would it take to, I mean, what, like, is getting a crushing machine within reach for us? Cause what if we crushed gra- glass for our own purposes, whether it's to mix in our, our winter sand or, cause it's just silicates, right?
No, it's a dimension. Uh, the glass has a dimension of, uh, what is, three eighths by two or something to crush it down to. It's, it's, it's a, it's not a fine dust, it's.
Oh, okay, it's like pelletized?
Yeah, there's a size to it, and so the other thing with glass is that the dust is, i- it's not toxic, but it's, it's almost, uh, uh, like asbestos. If it gets into your lungs, i- it will cause you problems. So, there is, uh, health and safety concerns there.
Don't, don't some places crush it to use it for fiber la- fiberglass?
Yes. I, I honestly, I, I, I've just gotten up to speed on this glass. I've got a contact in Henneker who is the glass guru of New Hampshire. Uh, I've yet to make contact with him yet, um, but as far as us getting to that point, uh, which you've suggested, sir. Uh, I, I don't think it's in the cause right off. I mean, the initial start off, the capital cost will be tremendous. With any kind of crushing machine and a glass crushing machine, it's gonna be a lot different from a crushing machine that's gonna do asphalt.
Yeah, I certainly don't wanna, you know, chase anything impractical, but, cause the idea is to try to make it more profitable, you know? But the trick is, is to find a way to make it more palatable to the people that would buy it in such a way that isn't gonna cost us a fortune.
The problem though right now, they, they got us too. You know, we gotta get rid of it. They're not gonna beg Sean, uh, we'll give you this much more. They, they can care a lot, say, or get somebody else's stuff, you know?
Yeah, there's plenty of places generating more trash than us that.
The way that surrounding communities like Northwood here has a pretty good system going on, making a little bit of money anyway, of course.
Northwood, I did go visit Northwood. Northwood's run by Waste Management handles everything over there in Northwood.
Townspeople don't run it at all?
Pardon me?
The townspeople don't run it at all, it's all by Waste Management?
Well, no, no, the townspeople, the workers work there. We don't, we don't specifically have Waste Management in our facility. Our facility, for the most part, we run through NRRRA. So that we can get the best pricing that we can get, and after talking with Bonnie at NRRRA, we're getting the best value we can for our commodities that, that are out there.
So, you said, so if I'm understanding correctly, how we're doing it, we're getting more bang for our money, which is what both of us do?
Yes. I did speak to Chris up there. Chris was looking at different ways of doing things. He was going to take, take it on himself and start marketing things by himself with, with different vendors. Um, I have not talked to him to see if he started that up, that was that.
Is that something that maybe you could, like, maybe joint thing, you know, marketing something, I don't know, whatever. Uh, that, uh, joint operation count, split it if it'd be, if it'd be. Something that could make money or something? That we generally wouldn't, and then all of a sudden find a market for it, if you find the market for it?
If we find a market for it, yes. Um, one thing that's been done, main communities do it, and South Burlock, North Burlock, Burlock will share hauling. They have one truck hauls cans. All that guy does is haul cans, hauls cans.
So, all those communities contribute at one?
Vehicle.
Are those, are they, like, we're geographically pretty, I mean, we're big.
Spread out.
Yeah, we're spread out. So, does that make sense when you're that spread out?
I don't, we has a pretty good recycling center. Raymond's run by Casella. Barrington's quite a ways away, um, they do, they do alright over there as well, so. We'd be challenged on, talking to Northwood would, would be, would, would be something to see what, uh, could be done there.
But that's also something the NRRRA is doing for us now, right?
Correct.
So, that would be taking it away from them and us doing it ourselves with Northwood.
Right, so that would be, that would be more time involved than just, uh, you know, c- calling in a, um, filling out a form. But basically what we do now is we go online to the NRA website and I fill out a work order request. I put what, who I am, what town we are, what the commodity is, and the date we're expected to have it all.
Yeah.
They then send back a notification that they have received it, and then within an hour later or so, they will send back a paper similar to this size with, uh, the release number on it and what the commodity is, who's hauling it, and where it's going.
What's the cost factor for NRA? How much are we paying them for this service?
Oh, not much. We, we pay a, we, we, we're a member. We pay some, uh, some dues on annual basis. Um, and I don't think there's a, I have to look at, I don't think there's any more in the way of, you know, a percentage or a kickback or anything. They're, they're really big. That's where the economies of scale come from. There's probably, uh, what are they? I mean, they're, they're New Hampshire, Vermont.
The majority of municipalities in.
Must be two hundred, must be two hundred municipalities part of it. Uh, so that's the, just, uh, rough off the top, that's a great way to get to economy of scale. There may be local things that are, you know, like a Northwood thing, that may be good for one or two commodities or something. But globally, they're, we really rely on them to stay on top of the market. They know where the best prices are. They've got all the connections in the market. We don't have to think about that part. We just, you know, they'll find us the best price.
So, they market and sell it for us?
Correct.
We get the money back and they're not taking a percentage of it?
I think they may get a little bite, but it's not, it's, it, it's a great value for the, um, the expertise, the service level. You know, just things that we just don't.
And the, and the different materials.
Could you please define NRA?
Uh, it's Northeast, I'm on their website now.
Yeah.
Uh, Northeast Resource Recovery Association. They are a, they describe themselves as a recyclables marketing cooperative.
Yeah, they're based out of Epsom, so they're.
So, where we are as of May thirty-first, as far as revenues coming in and revenues going out. We have brought in nineteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars, and we paid out two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Give us those numbers again, please.
Pardon me?
Can I have those numbers again?
In our commodities, customer revenue, that's us, has been nineteen thousand three hundred and forty dollars. The customer expense, which we have to pay out, has been two thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. But that gets outweighed by the thirty-two thousand some odd dollars in the trucking costs. And then the hundred and nineteen, a ton that we pay for ERCO. Uh, we have our paper goes to, goes to Wilmington, Mass. That's, uh, the only person that's taken that around here, and that trucking fees, eight hundred and fifty bucks. So, trucking is very, very expensive.
Yeah, ju- let me just put the, to put things to scale for you and look at last year. Now, the, you know, the commodity prices bounced around a little bit and the trucking costs have gone up, but just to put real rough numbers on it for you. Uh, MSW, solid wood, the stuff that goes in the compactor that goes off to the turnkey landfill in Rochester. That cost us about sixty-five thousand dollars last year to, that soup to nuts to get rid of that stuff. The bulky waste and the C and D cost us a little under ninety thousand. And electronics cost us about seven thousand. So, the, you know, the, the, the money is all in the, in the disposal cost of stuff that's just getting, you know, that, it, it dwarfs everything else. You know, we could, we could triple what we make on metal in cans and still not pay for. We could quadruple it and still not pay for what goes in the landfill. So, it's just to put it, to, to, put that to scale for you. Paper would be cheaper to throw it away than it would be to recycle it? By ten thousand dollars a year, maybe, something like that, just because of those trucking costs? Uh, some towns that are really dollar-sensitive have switched, and I don't know if anybody's switching back, but, um, it started, I started seeing it a couple of years ago. People said, forget it, we're not gonna recycle paper anymore. We're just gonna throw it away. Which we've not proposed for money purposes. It would save money, but, um, we've not proposed that for environmental reasons. You know, those are just there. So, that, that's the scale of things. The, the, just to really change the economics of the recycling center, it's gotta be around what we're, the volume of C and D wood, bulky waste.
And that's, would be the tying number, uh, 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 round number, and that would involve a scale, some sort of.
Probably, yeah. It would be a change in the way we do business now, to, to really move the needle.
Taking into consideration of what the tonnage is to get rid of the product and then the haul rate included. To create eight per pound price.
Yeah, and the, the trucking may be worth, we, we've kinda kicked it around, um, doing our own trucking and trying to figure that math out. But given the struggles that we're having, finding people to do that exact kind of work, you know, we really would, we could really get ourselves jammed up if. Cause we, we really need to move this material. Like, on, on the, on the day we need it to move, cause, um, we're, we're right up against it Saturday afternoon. You know, the, the Waste Management, uh, compactor gets emptied once a week. Uh, if we get, if our volume goes up another five percent or so, we're probably gonna run into trouble with.
The compactor.
The compactor filling up before the weekend is over. And you can't just stop in the middle of a Saturday and swap the can out and, you know, that, that's gonna get really hairy, so.
So, what I have done is I have an overflow can that is at the recycling center. It's out way out back, and it's just specifically for that reason. Because a couple of times now, uh, holidays and things of that nature, the compactor has become full, and we've had, we've had that to use, so.
Yeah, and if we, if we, if we don't have an empty, uh, C and D duh, uh, roll-off dumpster ready to start the week on Thursday, we're in trouble. Cause there's nowhere else to, to go with it, you know, we got that overflow that we have to sit on, but, um, the. It, it's all about the volume of those three materials. That's where the, where the money is. So, I did have, I, I got two things left, and one of them might help with the issue of the compactor filling up. So, we had just thrown out there before, uh, you know, previous meetings, the idea of a community compost heap, right? Whether at the sand pit or at Mars or wherever. Uh, we wouldn't wanna set that thing up passively and just tell people, oh, hey, you know, yeah, we got a compost heap, now there it is. But, you know, actively campaign for people to put their organics into that compost heap. Cause if those organics.
We're, we're talking food?
Anything that will biodegrade, really, right? And, cause it'll biodegrade in that compost heap, and if it's not going in the compactor, then ideally that's gonna reduce our volume.
That just brings up another problem, which can be animals.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it could be gated, you know, enclosed, like a, like a, like a tall bin. I mean, you, you know, you've seen the, you know, you can build one at your house out of like some pallets, right? And then put a gate on the front, or maybe something a little more commercial-sized.
Right, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, critters are always gonna be a problem, yeah, but, um. So that said, yeah, if, if we can get, if we can reduce the volume of organics going in that compactor, then that will give us some breathing room on filling that thing up every week.
So, that would require another separation process for?
For the homeowner?
The homeowner.
Yeah.
So.
And then there's the smell. I don't really know how people manage that already. Like, I, I re, you know, I separate my cans and bottles and milk jugs and stuff at home, and I have different containers in my basement. But I wouldn't wanna put a, a bin of coffee grounds and egg shells and rotten lettuce down there. That, that would be.
Yeah, there, there are community-scale composting operations. There, there are towns, there are cities and towns that are doing it. Uh, there are private companies that cities and towns have partnered with to come and take it away. There's, there's a lot out there on that. And a good chunk of the volume in any waste stream is, is that, you know, that kinda stuff. In a town with two-acre zoning and, you know, I think a lot of people probably already doing it. Um, I think it's worth looking at, but we'd wanna make sure that there was some buy-in from, uh, the users before we chase that too far. Cause, cause transporting your compost to the backyard is one thing, and transporting it, uh, in something other than a.
One day a week.
Plastic bag, right, yeah, that's a, that's a real.
Yeah, or in the winter.
Yeah.
Right, and yeah, putting the compost in the backseat while you drive there in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, what do you do with it all week before you go to the dump in, you know?
Right, yeah, right. So, it was just a thought.
That's a, that's a, that's fair game, that.
Yeah, yeah. And the last idea that I had run into was, uh, recycling cloth. And I, and I haven't, I, I don't know if that's something NRRRA would have, uh, advice on, but there is a market for recycling cloth. Any kind of fabrics in general, and typically they, they will just shred them up and either turn them into really coarse, commercial-grade fabrics or filter, you know, filter material or, uh, into, um, home insulation. It's really common, like, you can, you can buy home insulation that's made out of shredded denim, right? I don't know if that's an option for us, and I didn't really dig into that too deeply, but again, that's one more bit of substance that we could provide a container for, keep it out of the compactor, and maybe make some money off of it.
Yeah, I, I.
We can look, I mean, I, I, I mean, I'm gonna dig into it some more, but.
No, I'm happy to, uh, run that past Bonnie at, uh, NRRRA. She's very helpful and, um, will have an answer or point in the direction I need to go.
That's everything on my list for tonight.
That's, that's, you did your homework, Tony, for sure.
Mine was more of like, uh, signage. For people that know a nice big sign, two of them, that explain what the fees are for, you know, recycling tires, recycling bulk material, whatever, just.
Like a four-by-five with the price sheet that's already published, put on it.
Well, it's established, colored, so that when people come there. They can see, these are the town fees that are listed.
Yeah.
A lot of times when people come, they're coming from their house and they have it in there, and then there's nothing that's really posted, and they didn't go to the website to read the fees are, what it costs to get rid of this. You know, box spring or what it costs to get rid of this thing here. So, when it's right there, and then again, from the, moving to the, uh, a credit card debit system instead of cash.
I agree.
That way, we can track everything that's going on, of every transaction that's happening, for what the fees that are getting paid. Uh, it'll be easier for down the road for us to watch financially, you know, what's coming in, uh, you know, there, and what we're getting rid of.
Is that feasible, Sean?
Yes, it's, by fact, I'm in process of arranging that right now.
So, it's just, you know, it's all about revenue. It's all about, you know, trying to cut costs and it's, it's easier for people to understand why we're, we're charging for something and then.
It's not really about making money, it's about.
Breaking even.
Breaking even.
Which we're never gonna break even at all, but at least we're gonna try to.
Close in the gap.
And then that way, by doing stuff like that, you know, you can keep it open for the people to be able to use the regular dumpster to throw away their regular household trash, you know? We don't wanna take away a lot of the, the nice services of having a town dump.
Right.
We just don't wanna get killed by the, the, the service of having a dump. You know, so, I think it's every. You know, so, I think it's everybody's, you know, due diligence and responsibility, if they're getting rid of something that's biohazard, or if that's, you know, a cost that they know, their TVs. You know, that's an example right there, you know, how much it costs to give her a forty, or I remember even cutting the rugs up. People bring in rugs, you have to cut them in small pieces, if you didn't, there was a charge for it. And just having stuff listed like that, so people know. It just makes the experience, and there's no more, it's, it's written right there. There's no more questioning whether, is that right, is that wrong, is it not there? When it's posted on the side of the building, it's
Touched in stone.
It's pretty, yeah, you know, you can't, can't argue with that, it's sitting right there.
When somebody gets their sticker, do they get a list of the prices at the same time?
Not always, no, the, the sticker operation, the town clerk is, is giving out most of those, they're, they're available, but they're not part of the standard.
Cause it would, I think it would make sense when they're getting their sticker to get
They're gonna throw it away.
Yeah, but at least it's, it's proactive in giving it to them.
Sure.
Cause people are gonna show up there, they're gonna see what's on the wall, and they're gonna go, oh, I don't have money, I didn't know that was gonna cost me that.
But everybody carries a credit or debit card.
Wayne's pretty good about passing out the, the pricing sheets, he has a handful of them.
Okay.
I probably have had five of them, I don't know where a single one is.
Credit card would be great.
Yeah, we do, we would do something more permanent. If the, we, we're always tinkering with those fees to try and reflect the real cost to us, we don't, you, you just approved some changes a couple of months ago to help us catch up to the market price on some things, or we, we pulled back on a couple, we went up on a couple. We would do something more permanent, like a refrigerator magnet or something, if
Right.
They weren't gonna change all the time, and, and we can, we could trade that away, that trade the flexibility away, but if your refrigerator is anything like mine, stuff can last a while there, so we
That's fair.
You know, we're kinda stuck with that marketing method.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the sign, the numbers on the sign will be changeable.
Right, that, that's easy, um, but the, you don't wanna, you don't wanna put something in somebody's house that's out of date right away.
Right, yeah.
And that's with you. And that way, we could always, you know, I mean, you don't wanna say you wanna keep changing the prices, but with a board like that, or something that's visible for people that are going, we might actually be able to keep more of a, better on the market, uh, what prices are if something changed or spiked, you know? You know, more effective costs, you know, if for some reason tires go through the roof, you know, to get rid of, we can make that change, you know, on the fly, or you know, here, and go put it on the board, and there it is. And you know, even somebody that has a piece of paper from six months ago, you know, at least it's there and reflecting of what the costs are. That's why I feel like something like that would be more beneficial.
Yep. Tyler and Ben?
I don't use a dump. I like the service I get.
Me too.
Easy, simple.
Ben?
All I hear is just spending a lot of trucks, containers, compacting shredders.
Diesel?
Diesel, you know, all I hear is spending, 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 you know? The time where the economy is tanky, I don't think that's a good, good approach we should be looking at.
What are your other ideas, Ben?
Well, Chris had a point, why are we spending money, ten thousand dollars on disposable paper? You know, I know it's an environmental thing, what have you, but, you know, if we're truly gonna try and cut costs and what have you, you know, we need to be looking at. Certain areas like that. Until such time, and maybe the market might come back for paper, we can start again, but uh
I tell you, to cut paper right now, if it costs us ten grand, that's my opinion. I know it's not the best for the environment, but that's one thing where
You think the half of this stuff ends up anyway? It ends up going to, to these recycling centers, and then the market drops out, where does it go, where does it end still anyway?
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, you got a point, it is a lot of money to maintain the illusion of recycling if it ends up in a landfill somewhere else.
We, we have no reason to believe that's what's happening, but
I mean, do we get, we're loaded up with the paper like every, how often, a month? Every two weeks?
That's thirty-five yard roll-off as well.
In paper, we're talking about
Paper mixed cardboard.
Pressboard.
Pressboard, yeah.
Like a Budweiser box?
It's not the baled cardboard, it's a, it's a
Not corrugated, but every, heavy paper like a twelve-pack. But not corrugated.
It's the stuff Ikea makes their furniture out of.
But not this.
And that.
And that, yeah.
Newspaper, office paper, press.
There's a tremendous amount of it, it's every two weeks that, that container's gone. That is one of the most costly ones there, that's the eight hundred and fifty dollar trip down to Wilmington, Mass, if that goes.
And it's ten thousand dollars per year?
No, I think we, I think we netted, uh, it looks like it cost us about twenty grand last year. Uh, for eighty tons, give or take. Uh, so, it would cost us, if we could fit it in the compactor, it would cost us six grand to put it in the landfill, twenty grand to recycle it, that's real, real rough on the fly kinda numbers, but
So, saving fourteen?
Yeah, something like that, yeah. And that, that's the kinda thing that bounces around, too, like two years ago, that number was, it wasn't twenty thousand, it was eleven thousand. Five years ago, we made money on paper. Seven years ago, we made money on paper, so it's, you know
Up and down, yeah.
At this point, I don't see that coming back.
I don't, I don't know the market, I don't know if you have any sense of that.
The Chinese were buying everything that's was driving the market years ago, and they stopped buying everything, and now everything just
So that's potentially fourteen, what else?
Can't cut hours, cause we're only up three days a week.
I know, I know.
And you shop around for different companies giving the best prices?
As far as
Costella, you didn't invest, did you, the Montaigne for a block versus Segway's, Ben?
Yes. We worked with Pennard, yeah, Pennard got bought out by Cosella.
How long have you been visiting that?
For a couple of years, we do look at that, yeah. We, I don't even believe we have a contract in place.
Yeah, we, we, we looked, I think it was two years ago, we brought in R R A in and said, hey, we're, we're without a contract on this, or we, you know, should, you know, should we do an R F P and go out and, and they looked at Well, at the, at that point, they said, oh my god, that's all you're paying? So we just, you know, we did one of these and, and put it away, but uh, the best way to do it is probably just quietly poke around
Pick up a phone call.
Uh, and see where we are compared to, everyone, everyone else is in the same boat, but we can, we can poke around and see what, what our neighbors are paying for similar hauls, but lately, anytime we re-up anything, and you go, you go to bid on anything, and we're getting clobbered on, on stops, so.
Can we do like a co-op, and we talked about Northwood on something else, but as far as hauling and stuff like that, is there something that maybe a company can give us a break if they're doing a regional, like in three towns all border each other?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't have the sense that they, that the truckers, they're, they're so scrambled for drivers in time right now.
And, and honestly, the smaller guys are packing their vehicles, I mean, I talked to the guy that came down from New York to get our last load, he spent eight hundred dollars in diesel fuel to come down, and he's gonna spend it to go back. So it's that, diesel fuel is, is the driving factor.
Yeah, this is, you know, it's too bad we don't have one of those kind of in-town old-time relationships with somebody that, you know, we could ride out these kinda things with, but we just, we we don't have that, it's a special kinda truck, right, it's not a
Right, it's a raw truck.
It's, it's not a common thing, so.
It's a day alone to take care of our, our containers at the Nottingham Recycling Center, too.
How many containers do you have?
Uh, minimum of three, with a maximum of six, by Cosella. Seven.
Seven or eight, if you count the
The one out back.
One back to back.
Eight.
Sean, is there any, anything that you've thought about that, you know, you would look to this board for feedback or support on?
There, I, as Chris has mentioned, him and I have bounced around the trucking a number of times, we just can't justify to see if it makes it work, um, right now, at this time, no, I, I, I don't know. I guess I don't know what I don't know as far as what I can do to help lower these costs for the trucking.
Could any of our existing trucks do the job, even with a little retrofitting?
No, the frame size is quite longer, you would have a tri-axle, you will have a different hydraulic system, you'll have high, cable winches. That's an experienced driver there that runs one of those trucks.
I think everybody's in the same boat as us, every other town, I mean, you talk to some of these big cities that, you know, my wife comes from Ohio, that when they, you got four bulky items a week, you can leave out there, they'll pick up for free, but they, they're paying for it.
I mean, trying to
Land is free for landfills out there, too.
Join another community would be, I, I think would, would help diminish the cost, but I don't know who we could get on partnership with.
Well, what's the, the, the most similar community that you have?
Terms of uh, size and
Well, size, no, but population wise?
Yeah, yeah, of, of our neighbors, Northwood is, they're, they're a little smaller than us population wise, uh, but comparable, yeah.
Why any of them come to us, though?
Right, and we'd have We'd have to make some upgrades as far as size-wise and stuff. We have the ability to shift out the compacted containers. That would be the biggest concern, and add a couple of
Yeah, we're, we're at functional capacity on, Saturday at noon, you, you can't fit more customers in there on a busy day, it's kinda bananas in there.
The center of, of the population in the town using the recycling center is low. If we had half the people, half the population using, inundated.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
So what's everyone else doing using the local commercial services?
Yeah. Garage posters.
Yep.
All right, anybody got anything else for Sean?
Ken, um, I thought, I can't remember exact meeting, but I thought at one point, because the, uh, there was such an issue with the clear bags, that we were really just spent, um, using only clear bags.
I don't think we said we were gonna suspend, I thought we said we were gonna keep
Discussing it or something, I can't remember what it, but I thought it was discussing it come on.
It, it, it came up, but I thought we said we were gonna leave it as-is.
Yes, that's what you did.
Yep.
And as-is is meaning it's clear bags. Cause that's been coming up again lately, too, up there, so so that we're clear, it is clear bags, though.
Is it new people that just aren't familiar?
No, it's people, I don't know, I really don't know what the explanation is, it's people that have come in with the contracted bags to throw into the trash compactor, and Wayne's make sure they realize, and it's, it's people that have done it before, it's frequent offenders. And um, he, he points it out to
We hear, once in a while, we hear people having difficulty finding them.
Yeah, yeah.
I, yeah, I, I remember I had bought some years ago that were recommended down at, you know, one of the local hardware stores. And, you know, as I go to pull it out of the trash can, uh, the bottom bursts open, and I was like, oh, the heck with that. So I just kinda went back to the clear-ish bags that I had been using, you know? They tend to get translucent as they stretch out, so.
Were, were you thinking along certain lines with that, Ben?
What, what do you think?
Well, no, you, you brought up the question, I'm just wondering if there was something else there.
Well, I was just, I think, you know, Chris had put out, it's, you can't seem to find those bags, and if you do, they're crappy ones. I'm just concerned that, you know, you have repeat offenders, as you say. You know, why not just temporarily, until this, whatever's, market turns around, the bags, just not contractors, I'd say, just your regular trash bag kinda thing, but you know?
Black bag.
Contractors, I think it'll be a big bag.
Well, concerned, right, so the concern is the material that's in it. And a lot of times, what we've been running into is there is recyclable materials that is going into the trash compactor, which is taking up unnecessary space, which we do need.
Or people throwing away paint cans in there and stuff that they're not supposed to, cause you can't see it.
Exactly, uh, monitors have been found in, in trash bags, electronic devices, so people don't have to pay the charge.
Yeah. And, and then there's the time that somebody left the asbestos-wrapped pipes in the swap shop, of all places. So, yeah, people will get away with what they can, unfortunately.
Anything else?
If you have nothing else on recycling, can we take advantage of Sean for a couple of other quick things while he's here? Just
Yeah.
We sent you something, he, he, he wrote it, I sent it to you on the salt shed covers. Just wanna make sure you saw that and give you an opportunity to talk with Sean about that. Um, questions or comments on that?
Thirty-two thousand, is that what it is?
Uh, thirty, thirty-two thousand, has a low bid and a high bid of forty thousand. I've searched at least eight companies, a lot of companies won't touch those salt sheds because they were assembled by a different company. So, there is two companies, uh, Iron Horse and Greystone Contractors, that will do coveralls, that's the name of the company that did it before they went bankrupt and, and replaced these covers. It's a popular thing, uh, the low bid, who you just spoke of, is just finishing up a number now, doing theirs. Uh, we just Pardon me?
It was difficult lifespan, please.
Lifespan, actually, we got longer than he thought, we get ten years, we made it further than that.
We just finished paying for them, two years ago, three years ago? You, um, just thought of this, but um, you had, you had a, a concept, a different design, different method for, for doing this? That you've used in other places, uh
Yeah, but it, it's a construction thing, and it's not blocks, it's a poured concrete, three-sided wall with, with a regular Yeah, and then take the blocks and partition it off inside, but it's, we do it that way.
You wanna throw that at the building committee and say, hey, take a look at this?
It's a utility structure, so, before we, before we spend money on, uh, on recovering them
How bad are they?
Are they like this? Like all the sheds, that's the picture you said?
And so, it's, it was just noticed this winter, and it's, I asked about that, I was going with acid, and he says it's the ice. Ice is causing this, from the sliding and the moving and stuff, and then the age, it has worn, so we've made as many repairs as we can, as we can reach, but where it is a rounded high roof, we can't get up there to do anything. And all they'll do is continue.
What about those?
If, if, if you look, throw this at the building committee, they say, well, yeah, we should have, but we wouldn't have a place by the time winter rolls around, so we're gonna have to end up buying something like this, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, or our, or some of our materials at risk for this winter, yeah.
I mean, you got, salt is a big investment now, so, and the water getting in there will just, it hard I mean, you got, salt is a big investment now, so, and the water getting in there will just, it hardens it up and then it's a pain in the ass on the trucks and stuff and it's, it becomes unusable.
So what do we store on all three? One, we store salt, one, we store sand.
And one that we store a mix of sand and salt.
Is it just one?
Three.
All three needs to be repaired?
Yes, all three of them have holes in them.
Is thirty-two, thirty-two thousand for all three or just?
Correct, all three.
Do you think there's a bird issue there, like?
Bird?
Yeah, like, like birds, you know, like they'll, they'll fly into the glass of your back door, are they crashing into this thing and poking holes in it or?
I, I, I haven't seen it and I have not seen birds inside, so I, I, I don't have an answer to that question.
Some of them definitely look like rips, but the ones on the top look like punctures, you know? Well, you said ice would.
He explained it as the ice and when it sets and it moves, it, it, it's shocked.
Yeah.
It just slides off, that's what it's designed to do.
Yeah. But that other idea you had, so just three concrete, three walls.
Yeah, three walls.
Some kind of roof like.
Eight, eight feet high, there's a wooden frame with a, with a metal roof on it. And you could petition it off with all your materials, but it's in the.
If you had a hundred dollars to use it, I believe it'd be a lot of money. A thousand, two hundred?
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
I like the thirty thousand dollar option.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, so bag the building committee and, okay.
Well, they can look into it, it's not, I mean, but.
I mean, a hundred thousand.
But if it's something that we know that we need, right, and it's thirty-one thousand dollars, do we really want to push it back to the building committee?
Well, like a structure like he's describing.
Restall that, not the canvas, did I misunderstood that?
Sorry, I missed your.
Yeah.
Not pushing it to the building committee was for the restall building structure, not the canvas.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, just to consider the concept of, of, uh, yeah.
So are you asking for approval on the thirty-one?
I, I, we don't have that money anywhere.
Well, that's, that was my next question.
Um, like, we've got to, I've got to put some thought into, I think we're, we're, we're gonna have to see where we are at month end here budget wise. We're not gonna have thirty thousand fall in our lap anywhere, but, um, I think we're gonna probably look at asking you about ARPA money for this. Um, or new highway money coming out of the legislature, I don't have a hard number on that yet, but, um, there is unanticipated highway money that would be, this is an eligible use of it, so.
Can we get that?
Uh, uh, I want to look at, at, at our half year numbers in two weeks, um, and then come to you with a, a suggestion or recommendations.
If, if those numbers were right, we could have a simple like.
If the vendor's ready, we can.
The vendor's ready now, to be honest with you, he just got ahold of me the, uh, last Friday, what have you heard back about doing this, I'm, I'm ready to go, so.
So we can be ready for winter.
You gotta understand that this, this company, these two companies, they go throughout the whole country doing these things, that. Only ones that are tackling the coverall replacements for that company, because everybody else, I mean, I called Robin Sanford, they're a part, they're a very good company, they won't touch it. There's another company called Big Top, they won't touch it and just it went on and on and on.
But if we did a concrete structure like, like you had mentioned, the lifespan on that's gonna be at least twenty, fifteen, twenty.
Thirty years easy.
So, you know, take that hundred thousand dollars to buy it by thirty years and that's way less than the repeated cost of replacing these tarps.
If that's an accurate wag I gave you.
Yeah, yeah. So we gotta think of the long game for, you know.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe our next, maybe our next one, you know, our ten year, you know, in ten years, we're ready to. Well, we might not find somebody in ten years to recover these things and that might be the.
Yeah.
So for now, since we find somebody for thirty-one, but at least we know we have a ten-year window.
Right.
To be looking into a serious.
Yeah.
Fix.
Yeah, put it right next to the, to the wash point. You gotta have a wash point for your trucks. Okay, uh, do you need anything more from them on that, we're, I mean, we know where we're, generally where we're going on that. Um, uh, a few meetings ago, you okayed the rollover of our paving contract with, uh, Bronx and Sean gave you a rundown of which roads we're gonna work on. Uh, you've been digging culverts.
Flutter Street, found some stuff going on on Flutter Street, Flutter Street call for shim and overlay, partially with three eights mix, half inch drag shim. Um, what I'm finding, good granular material, no processed material underneath the asphalt, asphalt six inches thick. There's twelve, there's, there's twelve inch rocks within four inches of the bottom of the existing pavement. Which has a big concern, because I have spots in the road that have just appeared over this, from this past winter that. Doesn't make any sense with the thickness of the asphalt that's in the road. Um, so I met with the engineer on Friday from CMA who represents the town, he looked it over and. I right from the get-go don't feel comfortable doing a shim and overlay because it's gonna be money wasted, it's not gonna last. So, um, a grind is necessary for that road, um, so that would have to be put off for this year. We get, we get the infrastructure, which in hindsight will, will, will work out, uh, for us, uh, we'll be able to have a free start cycle. Go through and then the culverts can move around and do their thing and then settle out and anything that's settled can just be taken care of with the grind.
When you say grind, they're just gonna rip up that six inches of pavement?
They're gonna take a machine, they're gonna come in, they're gonna sink it down twelve inches and they're gonna mix in the good stuff with the asphalt, they're gonna create the base material, they're gonna.
So they're gonna reuse some of the asphalt that's.
They're gonna reuse it all.
They're gonna use it all?
Yeah, we're gonna change this, some of the grades on it, there's some low points, we're gonna fill those in, we're gonna reshape the road.
But not this year.
And kind. I'm gonna let, shouldn't, I'm gonna let him know sometime this week when Bronx gives me their new estimate, because they just pulled out another price increase too. So there was, that is being reworked as I speak with you now, I spoke to Chris Matheson, who is our representative from Bronx, who is working on that price change.
Do we have a traffic count that goes on Flutter Street?
Uh, we probably backed a number of years ago, but.
Yeah, but no, no routine state counts, we've got them on, we've got them on, uh, Deerfield Road right around the corner, but nothing on Flutter.
And we have them on one, we have them right around here on one fifty-two too, we might be able to.
I think a little bit of stuff that happened on Flutter Street would be contributed to the construction that went on last year on Stevens Hill Road with the power lines. Um, Michaels or Mitchies or whatever they're called ran Flutter Street hard, uh, all spring and summer. And that didn't help things out any, we run the tractor trailers and large equipment and just, they, thousands and thousands, yeah, they built major roads out there. To get to the power lines and all that power line work that they did do, so. But when I have that information, I will give it to the town administrator and he will surely pass it on to you.
Sound good?
Uh, the truck that we ordered two years ago. Is, uh, in production and will be delivered to McDavid on July first.
I talked about that.
Eighteen, that's close enough.
Yeah, well, it's, it's amazing.
Thank you for coming in Sean.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
You are.
Very helpful, thank you.
Good, Sean.
Okay, Chris, State Park.
Uh, you have a memo and a form to sign right on the top of your pile there, uh, asking you to authorize the police chief to enter into contracts with. Uh, the state of New Hampshire to, uh, pay for some limited detail police officers at the state park on weekends between now and August. Same thing we do every year, uh, they're not using as much coverage, they don't need as much coverage, uh, cause the head counts are, uh, lower at the park with their reservation system in place. And the, the big traffic chaos, uh, is hopefully in the past. And as part of navigating that red tape, we ask you to authorize her to sign those documents so that we can get through governor and council with it.
So it only goes till August, so it's like not Labor Day weekend or anything like that?
Yeah, it's a goofy system and we just do what they ask and, and, yeah, they, they don't need it for Labor Day.
Anybody have any questions about that?
I mean, do our guys work any overtime, I mean, is it the overtime form or?
This would be detail work, so it's a different rate, uh, it's kind of off the. They get, they get paid through our payroll system, but it's not, uh, not like regular hours worked, it's detail rates.
Good?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to the select board, appoint Chief Fon Woodman as an authorized agent for agreements with the state of New Hampshire regarding. Police detail coverage at the Pawtucket State Park for the period ending now through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor? And purchasing policy?
Okay, I think it was last meeting, you took your first crack at this, gave me a couple of things you wanted to add it, uh, those are in red on the draft you have now. Uh, one change was to, uh, require notification of the select board of, uh, what I phrased as unanticipated or unusual purchases in excess of five thousand dollars. That was one of the things you asked for, if that language is sufficient on page one. And then the other change, since the last time you've seen this is on number nine on the last page about, uh, conflicts around. Elected officials doing business with the town, which is addressed in state law partially, but, uh, we went beyond that a little bit, uh, with any. Uh, dealings with an elected official being approved by this board in advance. Everything else is as you have seen it.
So I just took another look at it, Chris, and I just had some things to throw out there for consideration. Um, under free purchasing authority. Okay, I'm okay with that, just going back, oh, so the, under the four, the quotes in competitive, uh, bidding. Uh, department heads will solicit at least three verbal or written quotes. Uh, my question was, like, shouldn't there be some documentation of the verbal quotes? So that there's some record of them?
Yeah, we could do that, we can, um, as long as it, yeah, well, we can do whatever you want, but, uh. Uh, just call for them to doc, like their notes of it, like to record the, to.
Yeah.
For posterity to, yeah, okay.
That, I think would be good.
Where, make a follow-up email, just, just to recap what we talked about, you quoted us.
Or even just to Chris, this is where I got.
Yeah.
You know, for verbal quotes, that's all, just that there's some documentation of it.
Uh, you're, you're in the first paragraph, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Section four.
Section four.
Yeah, section four, first paragraph, for purchases between five and ten thousand dollars, um, solicit three verbal or written quotes for submission to the town administrator, you, uh, submission in writing, is that, uh?
Yeah, I mean, the written quotes are obvious, but.
Right.
You know, and, and that's assuming it's kind of like a formal bid that come, or quote that comes from something, right? I'm just, if they're just getting three verbals, there should be some documentation of that somewhere.
Okay.
And again, even if it's just a department head sends you an email that says.
Since I talked to these three, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, yep. And then, um, down in the section on town issued credit cards.
Yes.
Um, on number six, it says, original receipts for credit card purchases shall be forwarded to the bookkeeper as soon as practical, so the notation of the account to be charged. I just want to make sure that there's a description of what the purchase was as well. Sometimes there always isn't.
Okay.
Sometimes there isn't when you do a credit card purchase.
Yep.
So I think if we can just work in there that there should be a description of what the purchase was. And if it's on the statement, then that's great, if not, then they should provide something. And then Chris, my only other really picky thing through all of this is that, would we please start referring to this board consistently? Whereas sometimes we have Board of Selectmen, sometimes we have Select Board.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's, that's what you get when you steal stuff from other towns.
Yeah, can we just make sure it says Select Board everywhere, please? Thank you. Other than that, looks good to me.
Shaping up nicely.
Anything else on that?
Do, do you need anything from us?
No, I will, uh, I'll make those, uh, changes, I'm gonna run it by the department heads one more time just to make sure that we're not causing them some heartburn that we're not aware of.
Yep.
They've all seen this and, and are comfortable with it from an earlier draft.
Right.
Uh, but I would assume we have this for you to vote on in two weeks.
Okay. School district.
Okay, you have the, uh, proposed, uh, lease agreement with the SAU for the use of the Old Town Hall. Um, that, uh, started as a general framework, uh, with your discussions from last fall and winter with them. Um, the, I've been working with a couple of different school members to get to this point, the school board has approved it and has authorized one of their members to sign it, if you are comfortable with it. It has not changed since the last draft you saw, we were just waiting for the school board to, uh, sign on. Uh, the, the, the key points are, um, that, uh, the town is not charging the school for the use of the facility. Um, it's written up as a lease, uh, but either side can get out of it once a year. You don't have the authority to enter a long-term lease without town meeting approval, so we put in that, uh, kind of escape language, it will renew automatically unless somebody says otherwise. Um, uh, they're gonna pay for most of the electricity, we're gonna pay for the septic and the fire alarm service. Um, overall, uh, and then, you know, maintenance generally as a landlord would fall to us, um, so they'll, uh, overall, I, I think this will probably cost us about what it used to cost us, uh, to not use it. Uh, we'll see what the, what the maintenance load, uh, turns into over, over time, uh, we are gonna need to do something with the exterior of that building, it's, it's getting to be time for a paint job, I think you'll hear that from the building committee. Uh, but that would have happened either way, um. Uh, we're close to being done, they're gonna move in by the first, they're delivering furniture tomorrow.
Wow.
Um, the, uh, I was in there today, uh, it looks like they're just down to a few little hookups and punch listed kind of things. Uh, the, the, the main hall is a mess, it's full of construction debris and, uh, you know, tools and everything, the new offices look pretty nice. Uh, they're, um, they're not spacious by any stretch.
Yeah.
Uh, but they certainly look brand new and, uh, you know, perfectly usable, workable place to work, it would look, to me, it looks pretty good. So, uh, I've not heard from the school board who and where and how they're gonna shoehorn the various people in there, that's, that's their, that's their business, and I've been working hard to figure that out. And, uh, they'll be off and running to their next crisis shortly after they move in.
Go ahead, Steve.
I was actually, uh, two, two and a day also agree with Chris, it looks fantastic. I was actually, uh, true to say also that we were Chris. It looks fantastic. And what I love is that there's a door that connects the kitchen and the bathrooms for the main part of the building, so it's preserved and so town can use it.
Yes, it, it is, is going to be locked in such a way, or left open in such a way, that when the, the main hall is used by somebody other than the, the SAU, they have access to the bathrooms and the kitchen in there.
Yeah.
Uh, as we, as we planned.
Good.
It's, remember, the main hall is not heated anymore, so it's gonna be a, you know, a half, a half-season or a half-year use until we come up with some other plan, but at least it'll be back in service.
Yeah.
Uh, for seasonable use, uh, for the public, uh, for the historical society, potasting or whatever it is that they, uh...
Bi-social.
Bi-social, uh, things like that.
All right, what do you need from us on this?
I need you to authorize me to enter into that agreement. Or one of you to enter into it. I don't, either one.
All right, I'll make a motion to the select board to authorize Town Administrator Chris Turndale to execute a lease agreement between the town of Nottingham and the Nottingham School District slash SAU one oh seven, um, for the period of the next year.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Okay. All right, I had one other thing. You're all set?
Yep.
Okay, I had one other thing I wanted to, um, bring up, and I mentioned this at our last meeting, that one of the things we get dinged at on, dinged for every time we have an auditor's report, is that this board does not have a code of ethics. Um, and so I wanted to throw out there, and I sent you guys an example of another town's code of ethics, and I wanted to get the temperature from this board for moving forward with that.
I think it's a good idea. I think I brought it up four or five years ago, and it didn't really move, but...
It, it's something we should...
But, yeah, it's, I mean, I, I think I had found a, a sample from a town in California, but it's, it's same idea.
Yeah, the one I sent out is from, uh...
Ogunquit, yeah.
Ogunquit, yeah. Others? John?
I didn't even, sorry, I didn't even read this, so. I mean, I'm not against having one, by any means, but...
Tyler?
Yeah, I'm not against it. I, you know, I don't know if it needs to be this thorough, but...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
Ben?
No issues?
Okay.
It'd be short a little bit, but no issues.
Okay. So, I'll, I'll take this and I'll create a draft, or if you guys want to take it and comment, give me your comments, then we can build a draft from there. Okay, so, Lorraine, can we capture that as an action item? Members of the board will take a look at the, um, code of ethics from the town of Ogunquit and make recommendations for creating a draft for this board.
And as you, as you come up with, you know, ways to wordsmith it, to make, you know, make it fit Nottingham, don't think of it in terms of us. Think of it in terms of the decades ahead.
Yeah, exactly.
You know what I mean? At some point, you know, we're all gonna be retired, sitting at home, enjoying ourselves, having given our, our decades, you know, to our jobs and, and community service, and there will be other people sitting at these tables, right, when we're not here. And just, just think of the standard that you want to hold your governing body to in those years ahead.
Chris, can you put that on the agenda for not the next meeting, but the meeting after?
Mm-hmm.
Is the electronics to hear me now?
Uh, no, it's a, it's a decision-making meeting. Well, it's a normal meeting, of which the decision on how to move forward with the E-nine-one-one will be discussed by the board. And there won't be people here who have an interest in it, I'm sure. All right, is that all we have for public? Everybody, and anybody else?
Want me to read the action items from the meeting?
Please.
Uh, this, still, still with the assessment committee, tax, duty waivers, personal safety and fund balance policies. POS will look at code of ethics from Ogunquit and make that through.
Um, can you go back to the beginning of the list?
Was the second and third ones on that list?
Sure, they, they might have, these, I've just gotta have been through along there a little bit. Um, tax deed waivers, is that done?
You don't have anything open on that.
Nope.
Uh, purchasing and fund balance policies?
We just did purchasing.
Okay, got it.
Is there something separate for fund balance?
You did that last time.
You did that, okay.
On Saturday, I went to the fire department, who had the strawberry shortcake social.
How was it?
It was very good.
Awesome.
They had a lot of nice, uh, raffles they had going on for people to see. I don't know who won any, but it doesn't matter, but they had raffles. That's not me, 'cause no one called me, so, uh...
I wanted to win the coins.
Yeah, I wanted to win the coins. Coins were great. Um, so, it was really nice to see, and I got to go upstairs and actually see the, uh, the two rooms that we did. Uh, they do look really nice.
All good.
Uh, Chief said he will be ordering up the, uh, the beds and stuff for it, but they, they came out really nice up there. Uh, but it was a nice event put on, you know, by the fire department, and get to see everything and stuff like that, so.
But how was the strawberry shortcake?
It was really good. I mean, I would've had two, but I was, you know, I was kind of trying to hold myself back, so I only had one.
All right, with that, I will take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion for the select board to go in a non-public session for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two A and two L.
Second.
Roll call.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Adana Dennis.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Okay, the select board will now be going into non-public session. At the end of the non-public session, we'll be coming out of that meeting and then closing the public portion of the meeting. And thank you for watching.